You got the gamble, you got your... You did, special agents. You don't run, you don't come and...
We'd like to call the board of the planning commission meeting for January 20th, 2020.
If there's any questions.
...to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call, please? Janet Brayley's here.
Lee Brayley's here. Alan Angel here.
Hi, Jeremy from here.
Gary Harris here.
And we'd like to welcome our new planning commission members. At this time, we are going to vote on the new chairperson. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to make a nominee. Can I say something, though?
Yes.
I'm very excited to have our new members here with us tonight and for the next two years, four years, whatever your term is. And I would like to nominate at this time Janet Prandis to be the chairman. I collect her six years of prior experience on the planning commission that we want her to be the chairman. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Thank you. Do we have a vote?
Do we have other nominations?
Can we have a vote, please?
There are no other nominations, I don't think so. So, yeah, we can have a vote.
Can we have a vote, Dirk Nady?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you. Nomination is carried. Now for co-chairperson, Alan, I'd like to nominate Alan Angel.
Second.
Vote, please. Aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. First order of business tonight is Aaron Stalz's application for an RV park. Aaron, are you here?
Yes. Okay. I'm in, has on his computer, the notes on here are really hard to read. I kind of ran out of time, but this gives you a little bit more detail. So, I guess the first thing, I'm well aware of the code. I know that it does say RV parks are to have 10 acres or more. There's a couple of things to consider, though. So, the first thing is, at one point, I think most people, maybe not all, are aware that at one point, this parcel was also part of my other parcel that the cabins are on, Gooseberry Lodges is. It was all one 10.3 acre piece, something like that. And then, to benefit both parties, both the town and the previous owners of the property, Terry Robbins and Harold Merritt donated about, almost a third of an acre for Plains Drive to go in. Like I said, it benefited both. It gave them better access to their property, and it also gave everybody on Apple Valley Drive a much better access. So, it's not contiguous, and there's nothing in the code that says 10 acres, the 10 acres have to be contiguous. At one point, if this still was 10 acres, we would have had to cut off, you know, basically build the same type of road if we wanted to build an RV park, if it were still 10 acres. That road would have had to go in somewhere right there just to get access to this. Well, the road's still there, but it just goes through and goes on to Apple Valley Drive. Okay? So, that's one consideration. We, if we opened an RV park here, it would be, there's 50 RV spots, it would, we would actually operate it as the same business as Gooseberry Lodges, and we would basically call it Gooseberry Resort, RV Park and Tiny Cabins. Even though it's on two separate properties, it's the same owners that are involved in opening up the RV park. So, that's the first consideration. Second consideration, that it does say in the code that there can be a smaller park that's mixed use.
Okay, that's where the code is very ambiguous.
Uh-huh.
And the minimum size, we need to add 10 dot 10 dot 100 recreational vehicle zone. Section A, the second paragraph, this is kind of our goal of what we're stating and what we want to do. And a primary location for an RV park that's close to Highway 59 or other major roadways should not be located immediately next to a residential area. Now, the folks in that area like their tiny cabins.
Some of them.
Well, no, I've talked to quite a few, 500-foot radius RV park, no, because that is a road going into a residential zone. And on the, the back of this code, I, we need to straighten this up because I think two codes got smashed together, and that's not right. We need to clean up the language on F7, where the minimum size of an RV park may be smaller than 10 acres with details such as mixed zoning, park size variance being outlined in the development agreement. This doesn't have a development agreement we signed on with few at first.
All right, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm still going based on the, the fact that that is in the code, and if, so if we have some rental units on that same five-acre parcel, it would meet with the code, and it would comply.
What makes you think it's right?
Because it says that it can be less than 10 acres if it's under, you know, like a mixed-use type.
If it's, I mean, I think the spirit of it, if you read the beginning of the sentence, is that the RV park and a tiny home or cabin can be combined, therefore, the RV park doesn't have to be 10 acres if it's combined with something else. That's, that's the spirit of the ordinance, that's how I read it.
Okay, so if I...
You think it's different? You think it says something else?
Well, no, I, the way I read it, the way I took it, is that, so you're saying if it's combined with another park?
The way I read, the, the beginning of the sentence, recreational vehicle park and tiny home or cabin park, so, two things.
Okay.
When combined could be, that would, since the ordinance is about an RV park?
Yeah.
It starts out by saying it needs to be 10 acres. The way I read this is it says the RV portion doesn't have to be 10 acres if it's combined with something, but the whole thing needs to be at least 10 acres.
Okay.
Because the, the ordinance clearly states at the beginning...
So, just the RV section could be less than 10 acres is how...
That's how I read it.
Okay.
Is anybody else?
That's how I see it also, and also, we already okayed an RV park right next to our Chevron, and I've gotten permission from, you know, all the residents being okay with it, the residents in your 500 square feet are not okay with it.
Well, are they here to say that they're not okay with it on...
Yes, yes, some of them right here.
Okay.
And we'll hear from them.
Yeah.
Have we, have we actually approved a, another RV park in the town?
Yes, we have, 10 acres south of the Chevron.
Now, southeast of the Chevron.
East of the Chevron.
It's just been resolved.
Now, that's, that's been approved for, I, I know that that was been in, in the talks for over a couple of years, I think, from when I was going all the way back when I was trying to get my project approved. And, well, at least a year, year and a half, I know, that for fact. I, I know, yeah, it may be relevant how long, and I know that the likelihood of that going in as of right now, anytime soon, is, is not very likely. The one that owns the property, I know that he's got a lot of other projects on his plate, that he's, it's a long time before that could ever come in, if it ever does. So, are we gonna wait to approve any other RV parks based on the fact that there's already one approved and just table or reject all of the others?
No, my concern is that it's really too close to residential. The next project down there, there's no residential anywhere near it. Now, you're approaching residential rather than moving away from it, and I don't think that's appropriate for that area.
Okay. Consider, just, yeah.
How many acres, this is about five acres?
This is, yeah, this parcel alone is five acres, and then the other parcel right there is, is five acres, too.
And those are pull-throughs?
They're all pull-throughs, except for the very front ones. The, yeah, so there's a, there's three roads that go, almost, you know, except for that very front road to the north, all of the others are 10-foot wide pull-throughs. The, yeah, so the vast majority of them, and, and it meets, you know, it still meets all of the codes, it's 10 feet wide per space, 20 foot wide in between each space, 25 and 30-foot roads, the main road going right down the center is 30 feet, it's got a clubhouse, it's got parking, it's got a more than adequate recreation and park area out front. So, there's, yeah, I was very specific to add everything that you have in your code. But the, the one thing I was gonna mention is, you know, I, I get that it's, you know, by residential, it's across the street from, you know, those homes, I, I understand that. That property is on a very big slope. There's, it, it's like a 7 or 8 percent slope. If we were to come in and excavate that property, we would drop down the property along the back wall by at least seven feet, and then flatten it out, so cut down and then fill out to the first two rows of RV parks, and then it would drop down again, and there would be the third row. Um, it, yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to make the point that it's, you know, it's not gonna block any views.
I understand, I understand, that's not the point. Alan, do you agree that this is not the proper project for residential?
Well, it, unfortunately, is so far away from the code, it's pretty hard for us to even find a legal way to give you the right to do it, quite frankly. There, there are rules we have to follow, and there just aren't, you know, there's no, from what I can tell, there's no hardship to you, to, to us denying this.
Okay.
There has to be some hardship that's not economic, unfortunately, and I don't see one. Do you, I'm just curious, just if you've done any economic study, what, is your best guess, how would this benefit the town economically? Have you thought, have you come up with any, you crunch any of those numbers?
How, I mean, I, I've done econ, I've done, you know, I mean, plenty of market research on RV parks in the area, you know, occupancy rates. As far as how it would affect, you know, benefit the town, I guess it would benefit the town in the same way that the cabins benefit the town, just more, you know, tax revenue. But, I mean, you know, this is, the, the town is located close to several very...
It's not for an RV park.
It is, it's, it's an amazing spot for an RV park, and judging, I mean, this is based on the response that we've got from the cabins. It's, I wasn't even thinking about doing an RV park until we opened up the cabins.
Do you have any way to buy another five acres adjacent to this land? Is there any possibility?
That's Ballard's, that's right Ballard's.
Well, I don't think it's Ballard's to the southwest or east of this property. It would have to be split because I know the property right next to it is quite a bit bigger, but, I mean, again, are you, would it still be rejected even if I were to buy another five acres?
It'd have to be one unit, yeah.
Would it still, right?
It'd have to be, it'd be one unit.
Okay. Would it still be rejected based on the fact that it's in front of a residential area? Because that, that seems to be the biggest concern.
And also, that that's a collector road into the residential area, so people would be turning with RVs, and I don't think anybody wants that.
Well, it, it wouldn't be...
A hotel where they're like a six-story hotel, who's gonna be happy with that?
We don't allow two-story hotels.
What about a two-story hotel that's still gonna block out the, the way I would excavate this, that, you know, RVs, they're only so high, you're not blocking out any of the view for anybody that lives on Apple Valley Drive. I mean, they'll see the tops of RVs, maybe, that's it. But, you know, so that, that shouldn't be a concern. My concern is what will go there if it's not like an RV park. I, unless it was like a restaurant, you know? But we're, we're planning on, we're hoping to put a restaurant on our property in front of the cabins.
That would be acceptable.
Right, but we're, but we're hoping to do a cafe in front of our, like, on our property, in front of the cabins, so it would be, you know, in competition. So, you know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't really matter. I just don't want a big building of any type to go there.
Yeah.
I don't want, because honestly, once they build the road down into Rockville, people are gonna be trying to build a lot of stuff here, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
And so, you know, I, I get that, honestly, my, my main thing was considering that, that last part in the code, which obviously it's, I guess, not as I read it, but...
Yeah, it's right, we gotta strengthen that, but the, the spirit of the ordinance, I think, is pretty, I mean, the, the whole thing starts out with 10 acres minimum, so the very last thing saying you can do a little room, I think it's, it's a vote.
Yeah, and, and that's why, that's why I brought up, you know, our property across the street and how it would be, it would operate as one business, and like, like I said, there isn't language in there that says it has to be contiguous, it is right across the street on the same property that was all one property at one point, but if that's gonna be the hang-up, then, you know, that I can't really...
I think that's gonna be the hang-up, I'm really sorry.
Do, do we, we wanna try to give other people a chance?
Yes, we'd like to give other people's...
Sure.
Is there anything else finally you wanna, I mean, I think we've...
I think I've made my, my argument and stated my case pretty clearly, so...
Do you wanna let people, maximum of three minutes?
Yeah, I might throw one up for public hearing on this, and please, please keep your statements to about three minutes. I know you have something to say.
Yeah, sure. We like Aaron. He's got some gumption, we appreciate that, but RV park next to us is, is a huge negative. It's gonna drop the park dramatically for us, for our two games.
Because we're recording, did you, just a reminder, if you say your name and...
Your address.
Your address, for the record, we legally...
Craig Rosewood, 1767 Apple Valley Drive. I'm the one that's mostly affected by this directly. Everybody else is affected indirectly, because your stuff is what everybody's gonna drive by to get to us. So, the concerns add up to just the normal things that would be for an RV park, you've got, you know, our population versus a, you know, seven tags for, seven hundred plus a transit one, you know, we have no control of the neighbors, what we get, they're gonna be, you know, a day-to-day thing, and you've got noise pollution, you've got, you know, if there's barbecues, there's gonna be barbecuing, you know, wind comes our way, you know, that's gonna be a problem, you know, the traffic is gonna be a problem, the noise, you know, there's gonna be people that are on vacation partying, you know, your seven-foot drop, you know, it's not gonna stop any of that, so I can see all kinds of potential difficulties and irritations for us. So, I'm sure there's a lot of other things that I haven't memorized, but that gets a head start on.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, Richard.
Michael Sossi, 1024 West Fulton Drive up in Gooseberry. As a resident up there for 10 years, I'm against it, but also, where I can stand on my driveway, we mentioned this a number of months ago, and it kind of combines with the RV park, I, your cabins, I can spot every cabin, rent it out by the lights that you have on, and I think we talked about putting a shield or a collector or something on those lights, and they shine right at me on my driveway and a few other neighbors. And also, with an RV park, there's gonna be lights driving in and out or whatever, and those lights are gonna come at me, and I love my night sky. I realize there's traffic going back and forth, but even at that point, it's in a move and motion, but something that's shining towards me is, and as far as neighbors, I know of two other neighbors in the area over there, a little farther than 500 feet, that have told me personally that they are not in favor of this.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
And that, obviously, some of those concerns you're gonna get with any business that goes there, because it is own commercial, and so it's probably gonna be a commercial business that goes there, that's gonna have traffic coming in and out, and so that, you know, that's gonna be the issue with, with anything that, that could go there.
Yeah, Rich, cop 1193 speaking. I think with the problems that we already have with Route 59, seems like it might be a pretty dangerous spot to have, you know, 30, 40-foot RVs kind of coming in and then trying to ramp up to get back onto the highway over there. I realize we brought back down to 55, but not there.
Not right there. Not right there, still 65.
Okay, so I, I think that would be a, a major issue myself. We already have people trying to pass on that right over there to, to get back in and get ahead, so I, to me, that seems like a kind of a dangerous spot.
Well, the worst spot is at the gas station, because there's no ingress and egress lane to get back on the highway. If there, if there was an RV park to go right next to the gas station without having that ingress lane to head back west, you're gonna have huge, you know, 30, 40-foot RVs pulling on there and having to hop right on the road.
Aaron, that's the worst part of the claim.
Oh, to, to, you were saying, I know, and that's a different subject, right?
And that has been approved by, by us, and Town Council. The sons were against your RV park, were against where it's at.
Sure.
And I have, we wanna have consideration for the residents.
Yeah.
I spoke to some of the residents and asked them to come to the meeting, and they said that not gonna come because people are gonna, we're gonna do what we wanna do, and I hate seeing, hearing that from, from people. But they like the cabins, they don't mind the cabins because they have somebody that, they have people that stay there when they come and visit. So, I'd like to...
I have a question. Did we see the letter? John Dean, 1428 South Canyon. So, my question is, what, what's the park that's in front of us? Is that an RV park that's right next to it?
And then you're, you're down by Cedar.
You're on, you're on, tiny home.
No, but it's, it's, isn't it classified as an RV park?
No.
Has that changed to tiny home, and what's the difference?
It's out of business.
It's not, it's not.
It's the tiny home community.
Anyway, entry question, they're, they're not, they're not an RV park, and not RVs in there, and it was a four-acre parcel that was approved when it had a five-acre minimum, but it wasn't listed, it was a Rick Moser, Eric...
So, so what I'm seeing is, is I think, you pronounce your name Angel?
My first name's Alan, you can call me Alan.
So, Alan, you agreed that the code is already written, and he's following the code, with the 10 acres or less contiguous, right?
No, he's got a five-acre parcel, so he's halfway...
So, he has five acres now, but he's going to purchase the five acres next to it.
It's not, it's across the road.
No, it has to be a ten-acre parcel.
Hold on, so the road in between was gifted to the town by the owners of both of those properties, so you're gonna penalize someone for someone giving a gift to the town? I'm a little confused about that. And Aaron's right, he would have had to put a road in there anyway to access that part of the five acres. So, that being held against him, I think is, it's a little ridiculous.
No, Aaron, am I misunderstanding, do you have a, a full 10-acre parcel here?
No, there's no, there's two tax, there's two tax IDs, just to make it simple. There's AV 1335 and AV 1337. Gooseberry Lodges is on AV 1337, the RV park is proposed on AV 1335.
And how far apart are they?
Well, it's just a road, so, so this is Plains Drive, right here.
Yeah.
At one point, the property just used to go all the way through, this, this all used to be one 10.3 acre piece going all the way through. Then 10 years ago, Harold and Terry, Harold Merritt and Terry Robbins, they donated that piece so that the town could build a road, breaking that 10.3 acre piece of property into two five-acre pieces.
Right, that's, that's in the residential area, right?
Yeah, okay, I mean, there was already an access to the residential area.
Yeah, I totally understand your point. Unfortunately, though, we can't go back in time, so...
Well, still, that man hasn't been changed yet.
No, but I'm saying, when they...
That it could be less than...
He kept coming to us asking for a combined RV park with cabins, he was...
Well, it's definitely that close.
And you even started by saying I didn't come up with the idea for an RV park until after the cabins took off, right? So, if it had been one thing, we might have been able to...
So, people were talking about the level of danger from that road, but didn't they put in, not right in left turn lanes right there?
No, not for this way.
No, I drive by it every day, so...
They're there, but they didn't put them in.
I didn't say, you guys put them in. But they're already there, so the assumption that there's some sort of a danger, like it's only a two-lane road, that people are gonna pull, what, 40-foot trailers, is that what I heard? In and out of there, but that's already taken care of with the city, right?
So, I, I think if you're in support of this...
I'm in support of anyone's property rights.
Me, too.
So, if they are interested in bringing business to this town, especially something that low-profile, I mean, I, why not?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Oh, wait a minute, I have another question. So, I've heard several people say that there are numerous neighbors who have complaints and who are against this. Where are they?
Well, it hasn't gone to public hearing yet.
There's one.
Public hearing.
But that's not, that's not exactly what I understood either, it's not everybody's against it.
And you know what?
So, we have two neighbors here.
We're legally bound to not make our decision based on what you all say was in public hearings.
Correct, so has there been a petition drawn? So, what I understand is a couple of the Town Council members went door-to-door to gather a petition against this project. That would be Debbie Cobb and Debbie Back.
You're wrong, you're wrong.
I said that's what I understood, so I'm right.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, you're, you're, you're...
Your two minutes are long enough.
Oh, no, I said my shit up in my mouth, and then you guys...
I'll get her down.
I will...
You're gonna assume that you're 59, or... Richard, next.
I, I will make a comment to that, that I heard from several residents that there were people on the Town Council that...
Don't fan the flames, dude.
I'm just, Richard, I'm just saying that...
Don't believe anything you hear in only half of what you see.
When it comes from multiple, multiple sources, then you got a, you got a question.
We've been, we've been running around and doing tax reform petitions, and that's it.
This gentleman here doesn't seem to...
Richard Fisher, 1111 about Desert Grant. First off, that is two separate pieces of property, end of story. That road is a public road.
Yes.
It's been chip sealed, it belongs to the town, they do not connect, they don't share each other, end of story. I don't care where and how and when, that's how it is.
Thank you.
End of story. I'm on the road committee, that's our town road.
I never said...
That's not his road or his access to his property, that belongs to the town, okay? And that right now, the turn lanes that he's using to benefit his property were actually installed for somebody else to do a development across the road, and currently, he's gaining the benefit of that, and that was not designed for RV. If you talk to DOT, those are not long enough to handle RVs coming on and off that safely. When they're talking RVs, you're talking that kind of commercial access, they have to have those lanes extended by about 1,000 feet each way. That's not meant for that, and traffic to his cabins for cars, I don't think that's a big deal. I think his cabins are cool, I think they're nice, they're a good benefit to the town, but traffic with RVs and people pulling trailers, a whole nother ballgame.
Thank you, Richard.
I think the guy behind him had...
Renee Hudson, 17627 on Apple Valley Drive, and he's our customer, nice man. They did bring a petition to our house for us to sign, and it was not any part of the council.
Thank you.
Okay.
Robert?
Robert? Robert Campbell, 1297, Apple Valley Drive. I give Aaron an A for effort in, in pushing forward and trying to be an entrepreneur and businessman. In, in my opinion, in a residential neighborhood with roads that are down as little as 20 feet... In my opinion, in a residential neighborhood with roads that are down as little as 20 feet, 21 feet in width, without looking at it flat and discussing how it's designed, I think it's a very tough neighborhood to try to put this in. And I give an A for effort. And if... I understand the continuous contiguous two lot. And if only asphalt intervenes, then why couldn't I put cabins and RV at that entrance of town on five acres? And a cabin and asphalt on that end of town with five acres? And if it's only asphalt that intervenes, go from there. So I, again, give him an A. I like Aaron. He's a good man, a good family man, and I respect him for moving forward with the business. I don't agree with the project in that area.
Thank you, Ron. You have a statement?
Camp Quail from Smithsonian Road. And I just wanna support the committee in following the zoning regulations. Couple times it's come up of things that were approved under Moser that we're all suffering from. And I think that we should follow our zoning regulations, and I don't think this fits them.
Thank you.
We're continuing to clean up the code as we go. We see a lot of it's where we have double meaning in a particular code. And we really need to help clear it up.
And this is one we need to work on.
It's one of the things we do.
I'd like to make a motion that we work on 10100, recreational people zone. It's ambiguous in some places, these loopholes in others. And I just don't think it's right for the town.
We can bring that up as a following meeting item, but it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Can we make a motion that this is... Can we move on to our next item?
You have to close, public comment.
Motion to close, public comment.
My second, Dan.
Thank you. Vote?
Aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. I really appreciate you, too.
Okay, let's move on to discussion and possible action. For line adjustment on AB 1338-H1, advocate Robert Campbell.
So are we tabling item three then? Or would you like to take action on Aaron's application?
I haven't got a table for right now. I don't...
It's just that some action should be taken on this agenda item.
I make a motion to table item three, discussion on AB 1335, commercial to recreational.
My second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're discussing possible action for line adjustment on AB 1338-H1, advocate Robert Campbell. Is this a simple line adjustment?
It is.
Okay. I have no problem.
Make a motion if we approve that?
My second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Got your line.
Again, thank you.
Discussion is possible... Possible action on shipping containers. We have seen the poles come back, and a lot of people want them, and a lot of people don't. And in certain areas, they want them more than others. I think that we should table this and have an action meeting on this between the members of the planning commission.
My second, Dan.
Thank you. Vote?
Aye.
Aye, vote.
Aye. And we have additional training. Is it a demand? Okay. So let's see the approval of the minutes for 9:25, 2019, and approval of the minutes for 12:11, 2019.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for 9:25, 2019.
My second.
Would there be one correction on this on September 25th? Page two, where Ben suggests that we clarify the motion? And then Brown moves to amend the motion. Do we need... Which other one?
I think they got cleaned up.
He suggested, and then it was moved, and then it's...
And then we did.
So I think it's... Let's make sure. Ben, is there any reference to the code that we wanna fix in here? Maybe this is our chance. But what about the RVs?